Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. Hope you guys are enjoying your summer as much as I am. It's getting close to the start of the year. Coming fast, right? All right. We'll start with our reports, opening plans.
All right, so I'm kicking us off tonight with the elementary school. The elementary school is going to be the happiest place on earth this year because we are Destination Disney. So anytime you want some joy, you just come on down to the building. Our supply drop-off is going to be on Tuesday, September 3rd, from 4:00 to 5:00. And families will have a chance to see the classrooms and drop off their supplies. We're going to have a continued focus on our responsive classroom, focusing on teacher language this year. And we're going to continue with our morning meeting. And we're moving towards implementation of Benchmark Advance, our ELA program. So that's just a little bit about what's going to happen at the elementary school in the next couple of weeks.
Do you want to just do a quick hiring update, Jackie? Why don't you just let people know where you're at with everything and that we're still trying to find two.
Yep, so Nelson has. I know, now I'm like, I have to remember everyone. You hope so. So Nelson has a final interview with a PE candidate. And then Mr. Keeney and I interviewed a long-term speech pathologist today that we loved and got references done really quick today. So hopefully Nelson's meeting with her sometime early next week. We were able to do some shuffling with internal candidates. So we had some one-to-one aides move to aide positions. And the TAs, we did a little bit of a switch and we put two aides in each pre-K classroom versus having a TA and an aide. So that allowed me to move our TAs to the open positions we had. So our backfilling has now been shuffling around to aides. So we are looking for two aides, one for our 6-1 classroom and one for our 12-1 classroom. So if you know anyone that wants to come work at the happiest place on earth and join us for Destination Disney, you send them my way, please, and thank you. All right, thanks.
That's all we're liking. Just two aides.
Yeah, we're doing good.
Disney's going to come after you for not trademarking that.
All right, at the intermediate school, our theme this year is you are the hero of your own story. And essentially what we're going to be doing is students will be learning about taking ownership of their lives and actively shaping their own destinies, emphasizing the power of self-direction, personal responsibility, and pursuing goals and passions with intention. We also have a supply drop-off that we started last year. Ours is on the same day as the elementary, just a little bit earlier, so it overlaps by only half an hour. And again, families will be able to see the classrooms, see where their students are going to be going. And this year, which sounds super fun, PTO is sponsoring Bounce House races. And the kids who win, or adults who win, get to choose a teacher or, you know, a staff member in the school that they want to give a $5 imprint gift card to. So like, when they go, you know, if I win, I might, you know, choose Mr. Walters to give an imprint gift card to. So that was something that Amanda Berman came up with, which sounded really super cool. So excited about that. We, in the intermediate school, are rolling up responsive classroom because we saw what wonders it's done in the elementary. So like they did last year, we are starting with morning meeting. And so I was able to extend homeroom by 10 minutes so that all teachers have the time built into their schedule to do the morning meeting. That includes our Unified Arts teachers, our, you know, speech pathologists, people who typically don't have their own classroom, but they'll be able to go in so that we are all a community. We also have some new curriculum programs in ELA. At 4th grade, we're doing Benchmark Advance. 5th grade will be doing Benchmark Phonics and Elements of Benchmark Advance. And then there's Amplify ELA at 6th grade. Also really exciting, the intermediate school is doing SAM Labs, just had a training today. That's going to be mostly used in our library, and so it's different STEAM lessons and projects. And it has a lot to do with coding and will help to also reinforce a lot of our science standards that the students need. And then really focusing on that consistency, clarity, and commitment so that we can support our students, our families, our staff throughout the whole year. I also just wanted to briefly touch on the cellphone policy, the intermediate school. We're not doing anything different than what we've done in the past because it works for us. When students enter the building, they'll need to have their cellphones in their backpacks or their cubby, and then they cannot take them out again until they leave the building. I did get a little bit more specific with our code of conduct and guidelines with that, but that has worked really well for us, so we're going to continue that. And then as far as hiring at the intermediate school goes, I am really pleased to say that we are almost fully staffed. We have all of our very integral classroom positions filled. At this time, I'm just looking for a cafeteria monitor, of which I'm interviewing one next week, and the ever-hard-to-fill position of building sub. But as far as our classroom teachers, our aides, our TAs, we are psychologists. I mean, a lot of those positions that we were missing last year to start the school year, those are all filled. So I'm really thrilled that we're going to get off on a really good foot this year. Yeah.
So the morning meeting, sorry, the morning meeting that you're doing, is that taking place of something else? Like on a different meeting time, or are you like?
Nope, so what it is, is students typically, in years past, from 7:25 to 7:45, they had homeroom. Yeah, they come in, teacher takes attendance, that's when they have their breakfast, put their stuff away. And then first period started at 7:45. But I extended homeroom by 10 minutes to allow for them to have. If you think about it, it's like an older kid version at the intermediate school of like circle time when you were down at the elementary school where, you know, they'll be able to go, they'll be able to have, you know, maybe a question of the day. It's really a very community-building piece. And so that's one of the things, because you want, no matter if they're switching to different teachers or they're staying in the same classroom for most of the day, you want them to build that community. And also with the flexibility of our Unified Arts teachers, speech teachers, you know, and other service providers able to go into the classroom, then it's like everybody's a part of every classroom. So yeah, thank you.
Megan, real quick, can you go back one slide to Jackie's?
Yeah, maybe.
So you guys are doing it on the same day, but we have different dates. One's the 3rd, one's the 2nd. I'm just trying to clarify what date we're doing.
Is, okay, yeah, is Tuesday, I think, is September 2nd, so yes, yes, so it is the Tuesday. Thank you for catching that.
Well, just want to make sure that we don't mix that up, okay.
Thank you for catching that. And we stagger them so that families, you know, don't have to come out a million times, so. Anything else?
No, thank you. Just a quick point of importance with the responsive classroom that Megan's talking about. You know, she talked about building community, but the one thing that it also does is it really works to build acceptance and respecting each other and respecting differences and how we can get along. You know, as we know, we had, we had some students last year in the intermediate school, you know, that they kind of struggled with some of those social skills kind of pieces. And the responsive classroom is really designed to help target some of those things that we were seeing last year. And they've noticed some real positive parts of that in the elementary school. So that's just an additional strategy that Megan's bringing up. And Cassandra has been integral because she was in the elementary and now in the intermediate, so we've got a pretty good training component. So that coupled with the psychologist, the crisis TA, and the full staff, you know, as Megan said, you know, she's pretty excited about a good start to the year.
And the other thing is, is that, you know, a lot of times you hear from staff, like, we want them to do these types of things, but they, you know, they don't have the time because everything's so jam-packed. So I know 10 extra minutes isn't a ton of time, but it's a start. And I have to be very quick with my announcements, I know. But, you know, it'll give the kids a chance to get in there and listen to the announcements, and then they'll be able to gather them together and have that every single day.
Is that 10 minutes, is it going to come out anywhere else?
No, it is not, no. So I actually was able to, so where it honestly came out was, for each lunch period before, with like a 40-minute period's typical schedule, there was, because lunches are half an hour, there was this weird, like, 10-minute transition time at the end of lunch before the next period, so I eliminated that. And so instead of having this weird, like, I don't know what to do with it, you know, period, that was different for each grade level, now the entire school is doing morning meeting at the same time.
Good evening, everybody. So how many of you have ever attended a senior project presentation? Do you remember one thing that they've learned, they said as a part of the process, was the common theme? Does anybody remember that? Not to procrastinate, right? So that's our theme this year. So one thing, this actually, the inspiration came to mind. I was driving home from work one night and, between my dad and Van Halen, right? So my dad would always say, "Don't put off tomorrow what you can do today." And the song "Right Now" came on the radio, and I'm like, wow, that just, that was my inspiration. So the lyrics to the song speaks about how every year we start fresh, thinking about resolutions and ideas of what's to come. And for us, January is not our new year. For me, September is my new year, right? And the same for the kids. And the lyrics in the song itself reminds us that each and every good thing in our lives starts with the present moment and the decisions that we make as a result of that moment, which makes our lives better. So instilling in the kids, why put off tomorrow when you can do today? And meeting those deadlines and getting them prepared for the life outside of school. And what a great connection with Van Halen. Everybody loves Van Halen, right? And the connection of the music, some kids, you know, we have a lot of music students, a lot of students who love music and all kinds of genre of music. So introducing them to a good song with a good theme and a good message can't go wrong. So we at the junior/senior high school have changed orientation. In previous years, we've had 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 on two nights. In the past years, we've had some teams do some things where they've done their own orientation. So what we decided to do was to make it developmentally appropriate, to make it relevant academically and socially for each grade level. So 7 and 8, that middle school, talking with them about expectations, what they're going to experience the first day, and getting those nerves down. I think in all the kids that I spoke to last night at the community schools picnic, they were all very nervous about what to expect and lockers and things like that. So, you know, bringing that anxiety down a little bit so they can enjoy the first day of school. And while also going, we're going to go over the expectations, including the cellphone, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. Grades 9 and 10, we talk about the importance of doing well the first day of 9th grade. We're going to talk about, all of 10th grade is going to take the PSAT this year to make sure everybody is, they could be eligible for the National Merit Scholarship. So we want to make sure that people, kids are, and being exposed to those kinds of standardized tests because, like I said, it gives us another idea of where they stand, not just here in SOTUS or in the county, but nationally too, which is also important for them, for their information. And then grades 11 and 12, we're talking about transition. Grade 11, they're going to take the SAT. You know, we're going to talk about, you know, expectations moving forward, college BOCES. And we'll talk about BOCES too in 10th grade and what they have to do to be eligible for 11th grade. So just making it very appropriate to them at their level, which I think is very important. We're also going to talk about cell phones. So part of the process and procedure, so every bay that we've ordered is for a grade level. So 7, 8, 9 is, all of their classes are closer to door 6, so that's where those bays are going to be. And 10, 11, 12, the bays will be in door 5, okay, in the main foyer, so there's two foyers there. So kids can enter either door 5 or door 6, or they could all enter door 5 and go where they need to go. But they do have 13 minutes to come in by the time they're dropped off by the bus, get breakfast. And it's going to take some time, and our teachers know that. And we're going to be graceful the first couple of weeks, just especially the little ones who have three lockers, right? So I was talking with a 7th grader, and I said, "Listen, buddy, we'll figure it out. Just make sure you have clean gym clothes, doesn't matter what locker you put it in." And he got a good laugh out of that. We're also, as principals, we're also going up to these popsicle events. They're pop-up events in the community every day next week. Talking, instead of having the families come here, we're meeting them where they are in collaboration with community schools. We're handing out popsicles. I'm going to be talking about, you know, your summer reading project is due, how are we doing? What help? Here's the packets, school supplies. Community schools will have some things to give away as well. But just meeting the families where they are, right? Instead of them coming to us. And hopefully they'll feel a little bit more comfortable, especially those who have never, if they're new to any of our buildings. It just gives them that sense of comfort, you know. We have a new curriculum in ELA. We are going with Amplify, like the 6th grade teachers. And the curriculum is a comprehensive, engaging curriculum for students developing critical thinking, close reading skills, and just developing that ability to read and digest complex text. So our teachers were trained this summer on how to use it. I was a part of that training, Megan was a part of that training. So we're really excited. Our focus, academic focus, is going to be on Tier 1 instruction, the science of reading in the secondary grades, specially-designed instruction. Do any of you know what specially-designed instruction is? Okay. So me as a special ed teacher of 20 years, that's what I provided to my kids. And it's providing them with those tools and those strategies of meeting those kids where they are in the general ed classroom, giving them the ability to access the learning at a level that they can understand. I'm not saying modify, they're still getting the same quality instruction that everybody else would, but maybe they need more like scaffolding support or a way to understand it differently. So it all depends on each individual kid and what their needs are. So some kids may be a visual kid, and they need notes a certain way. Some kids are auditory and may need to watch a video or listen to something different. So it's all depending on their learning style. But that's what SDI is. And then also looking at different ways to engage kids in the instruction. We all know that sit and get doesn't work. We know as adults, sit and get doesn't work. So implementing those strategies, and we're going to be doing a lot of that in orientation this week, or, I'm sorry, in a few weeks. As far as hiring, so we have two English teachers. So that was a wonderful accomplishment. We're still looking for a math teacher. I've contacted all the local colleges. I've contacted a few of my friends from another school district who are retired math teachers to see if they might be interested in coming to teach. We may have a line on somebody through Mike Megan that is certified, but it's not like it was when I first started teaching where I was one of 200 people. So the climate and the culture out there and just getting people to want to be teachers is just difficult. We still need to hire two special ed teachers, an E and L TA, and also building subs. So that's where we're at right now.
I'm sorry, Brian.
What would happen if we, like, failed to hire a math teacher?
So there's a couple of different options that I've discussed with Nelson. We could move teachers around. We also have access to city BOCES and the Distance Learning Lab. But we would want to have an in-person instructor for Algebra 1 because that is the gateway. They have, if students don't pass 9th grade, they're going to struggle to graduate. Research has shown that. So we need an in-person teacher, whether it's we shuffle our in-home, in-house people or to do something different. We got to think outside the box.
Yeah, we haven't given up hope just yet. So, but that's the one thing, that's our nemesis right now. And everybody's done some amazing, amazing work this summer. Just filled our main office secretary, so we've got three people now that'll be starting the year there. So we got, I think we got very lucky and we got some good folks there now. So math is our focus. And Joe's got some special ed teachers that he's currently looking at. So we, and with the special education teachers, we have two of them. One of them is in a consultant room. The second one was the additional position that we added in for this school year. And so we've got some priorities in terms of where the first person would go and then if we're able to hire the second one as well, so.
Yeah. So between all of our contacts, there's so many of us have worked in different places, so we're just reaching out to everybody we know. And the one great thing is that the cap has been lifted so somebody could earn a full salary and earn their retirement at the same time. and earn their retirement at the same time.
Yeah, because we have, let me see, one, we have three staff members right now, this current year, that, that have, you know, already retired that we're bringing back out of retiring, to retirement as a result of that, the lifting of that cap. So it's, it's worked in our favor.
Yeah. Do you all have any questions for me?
And this is really for all of you guys. Have, we know it's going to be chaotic with this cellphone thing, right? But have you guys worked with Jeremy as well on the transportation part? It's going to be slow the first couple of weeks, I'm going to assume, with kids leaving the building, getting their phones back. But then having to make that time back around to get over to the elementary school. So I just, I want to make sure that you guys have.
We've talked, we've talked about that when Jeremy came to our cabinet meeting a couple of weeks ago. It's, it's ironic because he brought up the, the same, the same thing. You know, one of the things that'll be interesting, especially in the fall, we have so many students that are participating in athletics. So we're going to have, you know, some, a smaller amount of kids leaving the, it won't have any impact four through six because they just grab them out of their cubbies. But seven through 12, we're going to have fewer students leaving the building. So it's, I don't think we're going to be as backlogged, at least at that point in time, till we can kind of get in that routine. But you're right, we're, we're going to have to be very thoughtful about that and then maybe have a little bit of grace here and there, so.
Right. And the, we have seventh grade hallway and eighth grade hallway. So what we could do, this just actually came to me, we could at dismissal, put those in the middle, one at seventh grade, one at eighth grade.
Yeah, because that's the one thing that we're doing is, Steve has actually talked to our facilities crew, and we're actually putting all of the lockers on wheels so they're mobile. So that's going to give us quite a bit of flexibility to, to move as we, as we need to. You know, there's going to be some growing pains. There's, there's no question of that. But we're, I, I think that we've, we're trying to anticipate as many of those potentials. And what we're really going to need is, we're, we're just going to need a lot of help and, and support from our, from our parents and, and students in terms of helping us to make sure that we, that we meet the regulations. You know, a positive thing, I, I haven't had any, any negative calls or any negative feedbacks. Tina and I spoke, and she hasn't received any, any calls or whatever. The only concern that I had, which is, is what Eric already brought up, you know, a parent mentioned that in the morning time, when kids get off the bus, if it gets backlogged, will we, you know, what would be good about making sure that kids aren't in trouble if they're late to class when they're doing the right thing? And of course, they won't be in trouble, you know? So, you know, if that's, if that's the only thing that, that we have to worry about, I'd be really happy.
I'll take it.
You know, we'll just, you know, hopefully with our communication, and Tina's got a lot of communication planned, you know, we'll do the same and, you know, we'll, we'll do the best we can.
We'll monitor and adjust. Jeff, you had a question? Oh, all right.
Did they come in today, Steve? Perfect.
Awesome. Jeff, you had a question?
Yeah, I had a question. You, you mentioned something about the, the SATs in 11th and 12th grade. Have we looked, I think I spoke to you about this before, into having a PSAT?
PSAT, yes.
For the ninth graders. Because I, obviously, if the first time you take the test, it's the actual test. Any chance we can look into that possibly? I know, I know one of the issues we've had is not a lot of kids take it. But the, the kids that do want to take it, it'd be nice to have that available so they at least have a practice before they get into the, also another thing.
Hey Jeff, a quick clarification. I think you mentioned ninth grade, right?
Is it now when the PSAT is, on ninth grade?
Yeah, because you mentioned 10th grade, and Jeff mentioned ninth. I just wanted to clarify that.
She mentioned, SAT is in 10th.
SAT's 11.
11.
11.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, because I knew that what you said and what you said, I want to just make sure we're on the same page.
If there are students who are interested in taking it, we're going to talk about it. And if, if kids are interested in taking it, we'll order more tests. The beauty of it is that we're breaking down barriers because either transportation, they can't get to a test site, right? Or it's money, because you have to pay for those tests. We are taking care of all of that here. We're breaking down those barriers. So those kids have that opportunity here.
And that was my next question, also the, the cost of it too. I know, like I said, it's, it's not cheap to do. And if you, if you're already struggling and you want to get out, but you can't afford it, well, it's a little tough to get out.
Right. So we've built it into our guidance budget. They've given us a break, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we're working with SAT and college boards. And actually, Sarah Burke has already sent out parent squares asking to get accommodations because the college, if you are a student with an IEP or 504, you have to apply for those accommodations. We can't just give them to you. So she's already sent out parent requests or parent permissions to get that rolling because sometimes it takes time for them to respond to us. Any other questions?
Nope, sounds good.
Thank you all very much.
I did have a question, quick.
Oh, yeah.
Going back to, sorry.
It's okay.
You switched seats. This is for Megan. So you, you mentioned that you, that you found the 10 minutes for the break. I know, I think Jim mentioned it once, that usually after lunch, the kids would go outside and play, and that was his way of using that as a reward. The kids that will behave will get to go outside after they finish their lunch early.
So that's, yeah. So recess is built in to the lunch period. And so it's, we've gotten to the point really where, like, you know, a lot of times teachers will have them come in, like during what would typically, like, they come in, they eat their lunch, oh, you didn't do your homework. And a lot of kids don't want to stay after school. So they might say, I'll come in during the recess time. Kids always have the full half hour if they want to eat lunch. But as we know, the vast majority of them do not take a half an hour. So about halfway through the lunch period, that's when they go out for recess or have different options for recesses they choose. So it was not in addition to the lunch period. So that weird 10 minutes was just like this time because the, the periods were broken into 40 minutes, but lunch is 30 minutes, lunch slash recess. So that's where that came from. So it's not taking away from any sort of like recess or, you know, unstructured play or anything for them.
Okay, thanks.
So that 30 minutes, they get 30 minutes to split lunch and recess?
Yes.
So if it takes them 20 minutes to eat, they get 10 minutes?
Yes.
So in the wintertime, they get no time?
What's that, in the wintertime?
In the wintertime.
Well, in the wintertime, we typically use like the, the gyms and stuff like that. It's not like at the elementary school where they kind of get them all like dressed in their snow clothes and everything like that. Typically, we'll use our gyms. We'll put stuff, or our gym, or the field house. We'll put like brain break activities up on the, up on the, whatever this thing's called, the projector, the computer. It, it's not ideal, but we're also confined into, you know, the recommendations and requirements from New York State about how much time you have to have for ELA, how much time you have to have for math and the sciences and social studies. And without extending the school day, trust me, making a schedule is, it can be rough. But we try to find ways to, to get them. I mean, they will have, again, I know PE is more of a structured time, but they have that three times in a five-day cycle as well. And I know a lot of teachers do like brain breaks and movement activities in the classroom to try to help with some of that. And I'm happy to say, all of our grade levels have a special in the morning and a special in the afternoon this year. So it kind of breaks up the day a little bit.
Anything else?
All right. Now we'll go on to our information section, our code of conduct.
So yeah, the, I, I think with the code of conduct, it was really about the, the cellphone pieces. And I think we, we talked quite a bit about that. So, you know, thank you for the principals for doing that. You know, the code of conduct committee met about a month ago, and we had some great discussions. And, you know, the principals were able to incorporate those, those recommendations and changes into their code. So we've, you know, we've also looked at some playbook and consistency across the district in terms of, of coding and making sure there's some clarity in those areas. So we're, we're in a, we're in a pretty good spot, I think, with that going into the year. Two, two sources of information I wanted to provide to the, to the board tonight. First has to do with some issues the district is, is having with the Health Economics Group. And that's the group that provides our dental services for current and retired employees. And then they also manage our 105 Flex Spending Plan. And back in, I don't know, maybe winter, early spring, they, they, they went through some management changes. And, you know, Steve Moore, our business administrator, you know, he's done business with them pretty much his whole career, and we've never had any issues up until this changeover. And what's occurring is our dental offices have been unable to get reimbursed from Health Economics Group for the services that they're providing to, to our employees and retired employees, to the point where now our dental offices are charging people upfront. And then people then have to go and get reimbursed for Health Economics Group. So Steve's been, been working on this for probably a month and a half to two months. He's been working with the CEO, and we've been promised that, you know, we're going to see some changes and some positives. And you might have a little time where things seem to get better. And then it seems like we go, we go right back in reverse. And we've been getting more and more and more concerns from, from people over the, the past few weeks. There's a couple other local school districts also who, who work with them that are having the same problems, as well as a number of municipalities throughout New York as well in our region. So we're not the only ones that are having, having these difficulties. It's anybody that's actually doing business with this particular company at this particular point in time. So, you know, we've actually been working with another district near us. And we've been, you know, consulting with our, with, with our attorney on, on some options. Right now, Steve is looking into a different dental provider and what it would take to switch over. It's just important for people to know that, you know, these things don't, don't happen overnight. There's a lot of moving parts of this and contracts that have to be developed. The one thing that I, we just want to let people know that it's not a matter of, of people getting their money back. They will be fully reimbursed and, and all of their coverage will be met. It's just a matter of some time to make sure that that happens. And that will not be an issue, right, Steve? That, that we, that we know will happen, that, that people will be reimbursed. You know, whether it's by the company or by us, if, and the point we're able to switch over, it's just a matter for people hanging in there until we can work through this. The, the choice to charge the folks upfront, that, that's not coming from us or the company. That's, you know, the, our dental offices, that obviously they need to be reimbursed. That, that's the way they're trying to ensure that. And some people have been able to get reimbursed in a pretty quick manner for their dental services. And other ones are still waiting. It doesn't seem like there's a rhyme or reason. So, you know, I just wanted to let people know that we are well aware of it. You know, Steve's been, been taking the lead on this and been working. And, you know, we're, we're at the, at the next step in this because things aren't obviously getting better. But we just want to reassure folks that we're on it and we're working on it. And, you know, everyone will be fully reimbursed. It's just a matter of us working through the process.
How, how does that reimbursement come, like, sorry?
Just, so do we have to submit a receipt to somebody? How, how does that? Or does the dental office reimburse after they receive the payment from the insurance company?
Yeah, the, the employee, if they had to pay upfront, should contact Health Economics and let them know that they need coverage and actually copy me in on an email to them? Because I will send it directly to the CEO and tell him to take care of it. I've had hit and miss luck with that. The problem with, it's not like going to Walmart and getting a brand-new dental plan. I got, we have to be accepted into the Finger Lakes Area Health Plan Dental. We're putting together all the information that they need right now, prior history, enrollment numbers, things like that. And then we've got to work with the unions to see which plan that they offer is going to meet an equivalent plan as to what Health Economics had. So it's not, it's not a go down the street, buy a new dental plan and put it in place.
No, and that's, I was just, so for instance, this happened to me on Tuesday. So, but I didn't, you know, I don't have a receipt. Do I send an email to Health Economics?
So you had to pay upfront, but you didn't get a receipt from your dentist?
Correct. Well, because I called in with the, the payment. They requested it, and I didn't have my HSA card with me. So I went and grabbed it, called it in, and put it in. I can get a receipt. That's not a problem. I'm just curious to know.
If you get a receipt, and at the end of the day, Health Economics doesn't reimburse you, I got a feeling Bob and I are going to become a dental insurance company in the, in the meantime. Because we have, we have funds that we haven't sent them because of their non-performance.
Sure.
And, and the reason we haven't sent them also is because they haven't billed us. It's, it's, it's the strangest thing I've ever seen. I've been working with these people for 32 years. And the company was sold, I think, in January. And.
Okay.
I got an idea of two different things that could be going on. I won't say them in public, but.
Yeah, okay.
But anybody will be reimbursed, including the dental offices and any of our employees or retirees. It's just going to take a bit before we sort it out.
Thanks, Steve. But it was, I think it was really important to, to have that, that conversation, you know, here at the table tonight. So not only you as a board member are aware, should anyone ask you questions or you hear anything about it, but, but also for the, for any public that might be watching. We've got some emails, and Steve and I have responded to everybody and, you know, tried to be as honest and share as much as we can with them. And we'll just, you know, we'll just, we'll keep plugging along. Steve, did you have something else?
Yeah, if anybody contacts you with a problem, have them email me directly at school with, with their issue. And I'll forward it directly to the CEO and tell them, and copy that person in so that they know.
Yep, thank you. The other, the other source of information that I wanted to give to you and, and also ask if it's something that, that you would be in favor of, it's a good problem. As you know, we, we closely monitor our UPK numbers every year. A couple of years ago, we had five sections, and we, we can have up to 18 students in each section. And this past year, we only had four because it really has to do with, with a number of students enrolled. This year, we currently have four classes that are full. Once again, 18 students in each of those classes, and we now have 10 students on, on a waiting list. The interesting part, that, that, the reason why, you know, Jackie, Cassandra, Heather and I and Joe wanted to talk to you and bring this to you this evening is that the, the services for, you know, three and four-year-olds throughout the county are, they're struggling. There's not as many providers as there used to be. And the center-based providers that are out there are full and don't have any, you know, any ability to, to take more students. When we're looking at some of our students this year, we have a number of students coming in that are, that already have, you know, have been identified, you know, through the, through the CPSC process, you know, where they might have speech needs or some other type of, of, of learning difficulty. You know, so you take, you take classes that are already full and with a waiting list of already 10, you know, we have, you know, 10 little three and four-year-olds out there that, that potentially could not get the, the education or the services that, that, that maybe they, that maybe they wouldn't get. And, and we're, we're still a couple of weeks away from school. I mean, it's, it's very likely that we'll probably have even, even more enrollments. So even if we didn't get any more students in right now, as I said, we can take 18 in a class. If we add another, another section, we're still looking at classes of 16 or 17 students. So it, it doesn't really have that, that big of a, that big of an impact. You know, once again, we never know from year to year what our numbers are going to be. And the last thing that we really want to do is, is like hire a teacher, if you will, and then all of a sudden, at the end of next year, lay him or her off. In these situations where we know that it's a year, but we don't know if it's any longer than that, you know, what we've done is we've, we've hired like somebody as like a temporary for, for a full year. You know, obviously, same salary and benefits as, as everybody else. But, you know, our recommendation is, if, if it's something the board would support, would be to add another section of UPK. And then, of course, we would also have to hire some support staff for that as well. In terms of whether it would be a three-year-old class or a four-year-old class, I guess I'm not, I'm not quite sure. Right now, with the kids we have, we have one three-year-old, two four-year-olds in a mixed group, right, Jackie? And then depending on the number of students coming in, would that mean we would have two threes and two fours in a mix? I, I guess I'm, we'd have to kind of see how it shakes out. The one thing that Jackie's very thoughtful about is she looks at the enrollment of all the students. And, you know, if you have. And, you know, if you have, uh, they also give screeners to all the kids. So, if you have a student that might be in the three-year-old program, but they're in the older level, that might dictate that that student might go into this class versus a different class, correct, Jackie? You know, so they really try to look at the needs of the kids and the age to make sure that we're, that we're placing them, you know, in, uh, um, in an appropriate, in an appropriate place. So, I wanted to, to bring that to you and, and see what thoughts you have and, um...
Yeah, I, I think I'm all for it. You know, if, if a family wants to enroll their, their student and that, and that helps prepare them for kindergarten, then I, I consider that very important. I just have like a question about, is that still something like, uh, grant-funded based on the number of students that it...
Uh, yes, it is. Um, you know, that's the piece as well, that with a waitlist of 10, I mean, we're, we're still gonna have to put in, um, a little bit of money. We, we basically get about, what?
Right.
About $10,000 a student. So, we are gonna have to put in a little bit, a little bit more out of our, out of our general fund to make that happen. But, um, um, you know, like a, like, like a great example, I, I mean, right now with our, with our waitlist, um, the way things work out, if everything didn't change tomorrow based on where we think we are, you know, we have, uh, you know, we have two siblings, um, you know, from the same household that wanna get into UPK and one student would get in and the other one wouldn't, you know, which is, which is a horrible thing for a family. And, uh, um, but, you know, also with, with the three-year-olds, I mean, we're one of the few schools that have three-year-olds. You have to remember that, that we actually have two-year-olds getting off the bus on the first day of school because they're not three yet before December. And, you know, we have a lot of students in diapers. And if you could just see these, these, these little ones, how they progress even at two and three-year-olds over the course of the year, it's just amazing to see.
So, it, just for the sake of like long-term thought too, are we, do we perceive ever any danger in that, like, that source of funding going away at some point?
You know, there's, there's always been, I mean, there's, there's a lot of threats and a lot of speculation across the board right now, it seems like with all funding. But, but this has been funding that's been pretty stable for many, many, many years. And there's a, there's really a big push across the state and the country for, you know, for early intervention funding. So, I mean, I would, I would sincerely hope that if anything was ever gonna be cut or, or reduced, it wouldn't be this based on all the research and everything. So, that's not anything that we've been concerned about at this particular point in time, Brian. And, and Head Start is still hoping to have a program as well. Once again, their program will be housed up on Ridge Road. They're no longer in our building. But, you know, once again, they're, they don't have a lot of students enrolled there either and, um, they're, they're trying to find, you know, teachers as well for their program.
So, if we were to open a fifth, we would need to find one, at least temporary teacher, plus two more aides, correct?
Yeah.
We need two aides in there. So, we would need four aides for your building. So, I mean, I think it's a great idea.
Your aides right now, Jackie, for your UPK, you're good, right? It's your special ed rooms that you're having trouble with, with your aides, right? So, um, we also have Tiffany DeRue, our special education teacher. You know, so, yeah, there's, there's some hiring that we would, we would have to do, uh, you know, obviously to make this happen. If, if, um, the board supported this, what we would do is, um, we would get the posting out for these positions tomorrow and we would get working on it immediately. You know, we, we would, there's no way we would be able to have everybody hired in the class open by the start of school, but we would be able to let people know that we're in the process. And you know what? If you can just hold tight for a couple weeks or whatever it is into September, you know, we'll, we'll be right with you, so...
I, I like it.
Um, I don't think you'd have to vote on it. I don't believe it's, um, you know, it would just be something that, you know, these are one of these situations where, um, you know, it'd be a good thing for kids and it's something that, that Heather and Jackie, what they'll have to do is they'll have to work with the state effective tomorrow because we'll have to amend our budget, you know, so that, um, we can get those grant monies in to do it. So, yeah, I just, I just need your, your support and go ahead and we'll get at it.
What, what time do three and four, are they done at 1:00? All day?
Yep. And they come in at the same time?
So, we might have to figure out if we have more on the parking situation out back of the elementary school. Granted, last year was my last year. I don't have to do it anymore, but somebody else is joining in now.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
I'll be there.
That is a very good point.
It's, it's just, you know, there's no better way to do kinda what we're doing, but, you know, the line gets held up.
It is amazing, over the past few years, um, the number of, of parents who drive their school, their kids to and from school has certainly, has certainly increased, especially at the elementary level. It seemed when, when, uh, during the COVID years, when, you know, everybody was transporting and all those things were happening, it just kinda, it kinda kept at it. Is everyone good with that? Is that okay? All right, excellent. I know on behalf of the team here and, and all those families, um, thank you very much. It's really appreciated. It makes a difference.
All right, perfect. Uh, we'll move on to our public participation. Nothing? Okay. Okay, so we'll go on to our consensus motion, number one. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Jeff?
Second.
Eric, second? All in favor? Any opposed? Stained? Carried. All right. Move on to consensus motion, number two. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Jeff? Do I have a second?
Second.
Brian, second? All in favor? Any opposed? Stained? Carried. Uh, on to consensus motion, number three. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Jeff, again? Eric, second? You guys are good tonight. Do me.
What's that?
All in favor? Any opposed? Stained? Carried.
I, um, I, I just want to, uh, to welcome someone in the room back, um, you know, with us. You know, as you know, uh, you know, Al, out of, you know, a, you know, a long-time math teacher, administrator, um, here in the district, who's been retired for, how many years has it been now, Al?
16 years.
16, 16 years. So, you know, I, I, I think it says something when you've had somebody that's been retired for 16 years. And, you know, when we, when we have a need to have somebody come back in and, and serve in, uh, you know, an assistant principal, you know, capacity to, to have somebody thought of and, and brought back 16 years later, I think that, that says something pretty powerful about that person and about their character. And, uh, you know, when we were talking about this, you know, thinking about somebody who's gonna come in, who's gonna take good care of kids and, and love them, you know, endlessly, but also give them that, you know, that, that direction and that firmness and, um, you know, those expectations when they need it. You know, with Cassandra going out on, on maternity leave and we absolutely wish her the best. And, uh, um, you know, it just is really nice to have, you know, Al come back. I didn't have Al's phone number, so one day I showed up at his door and knocked on his door. And, uh, and I said, "Hey, Al, what are you doing in September?" And, um, you know, Al, Al, Al pretty much said, you know, I mean, he's a busy guy with his grandchildren and he has a lot of gray hobbies. And he said, "You know what? I, I absolutely love SOTUS and there's nothing more important to me. And if I can come back and help, it'd be my honor to do so." So, thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know from talking to the board members, you know, on occasion, I, I know that they were excited, excited to hear Al was coming back. I was very excited as well, as I see him walk by the house quite often. And the smile that he had after that conversation must have been with you. It must, that must be where it was coming from. So, we appreciate that. Okay, can we set our agenda for next meeting?
Yeah, sure.
So, the, the, the big piece for, um, for the September meeting will of course be our, our summer school results, our, our August regents that, that Tina will have. We have some, some preliminary data back for three through eight assessment scores, but it's embargoed, so we're not able to share it yet. Do we have a, do we have a release date yet, Heather? They haven't really said, right? So, you know, depending on, on the release date, we may be able to share it, we may not be able to share it. So, we'll, we'll just kinda, we'll just kinda play that by year. And of course, you know, as we do every, every September, the principals will also give, uh, you know, a little update about how things are going.